Are we live? We're ready?
We're ready.
What?
Awesome.
So now, we wait for the camera guy now?
Yes, the public. We always say. So with that being said, folks, it's Tuesday, February 25th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. My scanner time. If you want to talk to debates on TV, you can go and watch it and talk to the TV.
Oh, it's nice.
With that being said, Mr. Jackie, we lit us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that being said, we'll do line item B, review and approval of minutes from February 11th. Ready for meeting?
I move to approve.
I second if I wasn't here.
Okay. We have a first and a second on discussion of the minute meetings from February 11th. Any corrections, alterations? So with that being said, I was in favor of approving as submitted. Say aye.
Aye.
I was opposed, same sign. Thank you. Light item C, Director of Operations Report.
I don't have a report at this time, but there are some things I'd like to discuss after we get through the items on the agenda. If you have any questions, you have now.
You moved it C, will be?
That's what it looks like. So with that being said, we'll jump to light item D, application for zoning compliance certificates for review. And this is strictly for review, not for approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want that to be noted. It's strictly for review. So what is discussed here is not truly finalized. So with that being said, I'll open up discussion certificate number 2020-0002, Pioneer Meadows Apartment Complex. Mr. Hazelbaker, update note?
Well, it is in your packet and as we just wanted to indicate, it is for your review for tonight. We'll go before the planning board next Thursday night, March 5th, for their discussion review. And one of the reasons it's on the tide is that it's for your review, but to keep the process going is one of the reasons why you're seeing it tonight. It gives you the chance. The more chances you get to see it, the more informed you are. So that's, that's why. So there are two copies. There's one in front of wrestling.
Has the fire chief got to look at all this and sign off on it?
No, he does not.
When does all that come into play?
I'll have, invite him for the planning board meeting.
Okay. I'm assuming that this stuff should actually be approved by him before it's approved by the chief, shouldn't it? Just, I don't know what the proper procedure is for...
So are they putting any designated fire lane?
I did not see one.
Because to me, that would throw off the whole configuration.
Okay, and that's, and that's why we have this review, so we'd like to...
And I think that's something that has to be addressed by us as well as the fire marshal.
Well, and then also, and I guess actually a planning issue is the placement of waters. Who were asking about the shutdown? Does City Jason have a chance to...
Yes.
That's okay?
Yeah, he does, yep.
But I noticed over here that they got two on Franklin Avenue? Or no, where was it? They've got two, they show two different water shut offs, but only one of them is going to be used. Or I'm assuming this one maybe is already in place.
Walnut.
On Walnut Street, the furthest one to the south. They show their water line coming in and tapping and coming down thing. But then if you look just to the south, there's another, shows another tap of some kind. Water shut off, or it just goes to the south, or they not going to use that one?
I do not know. There's one for the fire hydrant though.
Oh, maybe that's a fire...
There's a fire hydrant.
Okay, that's okay.
So that would be the...
Maybe that's right, you see that other water line there, and I thought, well, that's kind of funny, they're going to put a new one in next to the old.
You bring up a good question though, and it might be overkill. But we're looking at the fire marshal's approval, or fire chief's approval, water sewer. In projects like this, would you like to see the letters?
I think it'd be...
I think on one hand, it's nice, when you look at the subdivision application packet, you have the, what, 30, so I need to check off. And I think it would be nice just to note the homework was done, so we're not questioning what happened on the other side of the wall or...
Okay, yeah, because I just heard, yeah, the, yeah, Jason had anything like that.
The thing I asked about the fire marshal is that you have to have a fire lane go through there. That's actually where they cut down about 25 foot in pieces. And I don't know, like I said, maybe Walnut Street would be enough part of the corner. I don't know how that works. That's a definitely a fire marshal... Somebody's question that I can't answer, and I tried to look in the book I give up.
And then I noticed speaking today with a couple of the residents down there, that they're still concerned as one, safety, the fence on Walnut, as well as a secondary fence on Franklin. That's a big concern for safety.
Okay, the fence?
On Walnut.
On Walnut, okay, and then what would the secondary?
Then maybe I'd just like to have that privacy fence on the backside of going to be like the clubhouse and the playground to help minimize noise.
So...
I know the developments are...
So you would double, so you would double fence it?
Yes, they would like to have their own fence.
I don't know about double fence, because they said they were going to tear it down and put another fence up.
Okay.
So I just, that's why I'm just clarification.
Right, they don't show it on their plan. They agreed a fence, because they talked about fencing their house.
Because Walnut's a safety issue as well as prohibiting parking on Walnut, because you still have the rear entrances into those units. And I'm sorry, we're going to go across the yard to enter.
They're not showing the entrances on...
I know, but they were there on the drawings.
I would think they have to, because I'm sure they have to have one in and one out.
But truly for safety, that was their biggest concern. Noise is again another concern, but I think once the fences are in place, it'll help it. Parking, as pre-said, is not an issue, but I think with the adjustment of a fire lane, we'll have to really look into that. Jackie?
Yeah?
Any questions, comments, concerns on this?
No. It just looks really crowded to me, but I guess that's my main concern. And I'm not familiar enough to know how much space needs to be between each unit, but it just looks like a whole lot of people crammed in a very short space, and that worries me about anything like that.
Have you run down and looked at the lot?
Well, I didn't bother. I was going to go today. But it just looks so small.
It does look awful.
It looks really tight to me.
Especially when you're going to have this big junk here that you can't use. You know, the drainage ditch and stuff, so everything's going to be pushed to the...
That's the one.
Without knowing for sure where the lot line is down there. But it just looks awful crowded. I guess the best way to stay out.
Yeah, they look stacked up.
And in the drawings and everything else, because the density of these three larger units there put in a fire suppression system, I believe, yes? Doug, any questions, comments, concerns?
No. These are available, if you'd like to know, check them out.
I guess I need to go on record that I'm grateful that the young gentleman who's here is actually taking our feedback and actually applying it, especially in regards to the cottons, moving that fourplex over and the playground in its place. I guess I would have liked to have seen senior facility 5500, but it is what it is.
You're not that old yet.
I'm okay.
He's getting old, oh, yeah.
I'll be right back, buddy. Coming out of the studio last night, I was a little sore.
Okay, I see one of everything that kids kind of mentioned here too. And the way these lots are set up, Harrington is actually the frontage. They only have a 10-foot set back on the frontage. It's commercial. I think it's true.
And that is?
They're using Walnut Street for the frontage?
Yes.
But actually, our ordinance is pretty clear that the narrowest of the lot is the frontage. So...
That would be Harrington.
So they ask, do you have 25-foot front?
I have 25-foot frontage.
10 on the side and 10 in the middle.
That's going to shift everything.
Right, about 15 feet. They've got... I don't know, they got 10, 7. They could actually make it 15 feet just by moving anything down.
Right.
You know, they'd have to move this building closer to the sidewalk, move the parking, parking. They'd go with this stuff, because they're also, they have 15 feet here and 15 feet here. So they could take five feet off here, six feet off here, gain 11. Which would be 21, and then they don't need four feet to take a year. Pretty easy, but... So it's just a minor thing, but... I guess that was one of the concerns I had looking at it. It's hard to look at on the other 10 minutes.
Be nice to get that big computer at home and...
Well, if you were on the big computer, you sure got to blow it up there. Well, I don't know, I guess the guy could hook it up to a fresh spring, and then what then?
It's not a bad idea though for the next meeting.
Yeah, because then we could actually... You've got a digital version of this, Richard.
Pardon?
You have a digital version of this, Richard.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea for the next meeting.
Then we could actually sit back and work on it.
Yeah.
Let's see, where is it going there? I guess the rear has... Unit, unit.
Is this front from there?
There's a problem with the rear.
Is there a vision of that? Do you get close to the... Where we...
That's what the fence actually looks like. Is there landscaping in here on this side here?
There's landscaping in there.
Yeah, they actually have pretty good landscaping.
Yeah, it shows where the trees are and bushes and...
Yes.
Oh, you know, I didn't even look for that.
Is there lighting?
Sure, there probably is.
Just curiosity, with all that parking and with the two empty lots next door, I guess just for security purposes, the place is well-lit.
There is an electrical one in there.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the electric ones are there, but I didn't check.
Lights, like lampposts. Because I'm sure that would play a big factor with those down next door.
Correct. Well, on the tour, we actually have our ordinance, I think, that they don't have lights, because they can't shine, they have to shine, they can't shine off the property.
The alarms and everything, yeah.
And things like that, but...
So with that being said, I'll actually open this up for a public discussion. Unfortunately, no interaction with Facebook, I'm sorry. But we'll be back in two weeks if you have questions or comments or concerns. Anyone else in the public have comments? Not at this time, good to know. Doug or Jackie, any other comments or concerns if you're saying?
No, I thought about lighting also.
Yeah, because I just don't see it noted.
I don't see it here either, that's why I thought it was Doug.
I mean, yeah, that falls under the safety.
Yeah, but it's crowded here, I just don't see it.
Yes, they got, got all the exterior lighting, including soft kitchen area lighting showing on sheet c.
Right.
So someplace there is a thing showing lighting, but...
I didn't see it. And again, what's the timeframe on this, Mr. Hazelbaker? From start to finish, two years?
I think they finally have done in a year.
Right, they're planning on starting this spring and doing open mowers.
Yeah, I think that was what he said, yeah.
I think so.
Later this spring.
And they're going to deal with all the displacement of the goal person later?
I hope so. Well...
Sorry.
Moved in our neighborhood.
Dang right. A grassed pringer. They're going to move it all up. And then I would just say the only thing is probably with that privacy fence, when it hits that corner, then it adjusts from heights.
Yeah.
That way we don't have issues with those side triangles. So with that being said, I'd open up any further discussion on line N D, the Pioneer Meadows Apartments Complex. I don't want to do this discussion. So with that being said, we'll do certificate 2020-0005, Smith. Mr. Hazelbaker, quick overview?
Mr. Daniel Smith came in and would like to add on to his current home at 907 East Bennet. He provided the forms and then some drawings. Very first drawing is the way it stands now. He indicated where the sewer line runs, where the water runs, where the home is. Here's a scale, where the gas runs. Shed, the home, deck. That's the first one. Then the second one is what he'd like to do.
Basically just enclose that part, that deck?
Yep.
Right.
Add a new room, new deck in front, or porch in front. And then, then a shop and garage in back.
And that clearly wants all the proper setbacks, I see.
Yep.
So is this currently a one bedroom going to a two bedroom?
Yes.
So it's truly the only concern is basically parking, Doug, see?
He's got it.
And he has it noted.
One question, I'll just for the future, on the front of this thing, or the fence, is that actually the property line or is that just fence? Because most fences are actually five feet off the property line, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
I don't, I didn't know. I didn't understand if that was a...
And then that part of town, yeah, hot and wet, yeah.
Which it was.
Because I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a boulevard there.
I'm not sure the size is probably the property in the back is probably the property, but the front is, I just wasn't sure about that. Maybe just the next time they do a match, make sure they do that.
Yeah, because it's clearly noted personally.
Yeah, I mean, if he's not going past the existing house, so I'm sure that, that everything is okay, but...
So with that being said, this time I will open up certificate 2020-0005 for a motion.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Right. So with that being said, we have a first and a second. We will open up that public discussion for the public that's here. They have any feedback on that application for Mr. Smith? With that being said, we'll bounce it back to the commission. Anyone have any feedback, concerns, comments, issues?
He's building a garage back there, true?
On the back, yes. That's what I said, doesn't mean the proper setbacks. Because that's where you have a two-bedroom house and he has at the park. So he needs that requirement.
And that's a project that could possibly be further down the road for him. He's very conscientious about this project. He wanted to start doing some work inside the home and...
Just the garage from the side for the alley.
And he's pulling in off the alley for the garage?
Yes, he would.
If we were to find, I'm trying to figure if you pull off the alley from the garage, it was 25 feet down. To the garage. I don't know. Seems like that one's before.
So Hazelbaker, do you recall access up an alley to the garage? Is there additional 25 feet or is it still 10 feet?
I mean, it's 10 feet, it's still 10.
Yeah.
I'll verify that.
I think we discussed it at one time.
I don't remember if we were dating anything.
It was just 10.
Right.
That's, that one down there on the corner, we had some struggle with it.
Yes, the one I can, the Barnett issue. Yes, because safety, even a side train will come around those driveways. Yeah.
Okay.
With that being said, I was in favor of approving certificate number 2020-0005, Smith, the home addition. Say aye.
Aye.
I was opposed, same sign. So it's yet moved. Mr. Hazelbaker, thank you.
Good to know.
Thank you to the Smiths for truly filling out the application and doing everything great. It makes our job easier, so thank you.
It's actually nice that they did things to scale too, so you could, you know?
Yeah.
That's a nice addition.
So with that being said, it looks like we're dropping to light item number E mixed with C. Update discussion of possible zoning in the potato cellar area.
What I have in front of me is just additional information. I haven't had a chance to visit yet with the agricultural, the potato cellar people, I guess. I've added some definitions. And then on the back page, I've added just another operational area. And then some things that I'm going to look at, safety plan, containment plan. I think that'd be part of the approval process. So if there's spills, they'll have a plan. And there's two lines together, the day-to-day and the all operating stresses, those type of things. Every storage tank should clearly be labeled, I think, just for fire department. And a lot of these came out of the fire code. And again, I think as I mentioned, the file, the fire code, nothing can be built without the fire code approval, so...
Correct.
And then just as I said, the operating emergency procedures, I think they ought to be written. We see a written documentation of what we're going to do, because it's a safe... I think the main issue is the safety, the people, the homes are already there.
Correct.
And for their safety, for their comfort, I think they ought to know, they guess these are the plans. And for their safety, for their comfort, uh, I think they ought to know the, yes, these are the plans, this is what would happen, yeah.
Okay, last meeting, we talked about housing being a, um...
Oh, like a manager's house or a facility?
Yeah. Conditionings. Where we put in restrictions such as permitted use and for housing, conditional use or...
Okay.
Whatever.
Be a good place for it. And then truly, um, to bring folks up to date, Ms. Jackie, truly, we're back to the potato thing. I know we're on our third year and it's gonna get done this year. Um, this was perhaps the best way to embrace what's already there with the neighborhood and truly it is ag. We are not Texas. We don't have processing facilities, they're gonna go boom, folks. So that panic and hysteria that's been out there the last couple of weeks, this is Dillon, Montana. Um, we do have zoning and this is what we're putting in place, but this is truly, um, all the folks that are impact are very proactive with this as well. I think it's a great addition to our zoning document. And about time we looked into embracing our community, which is ag.
Now, are we gonna add in there somewhere a thing that no processing is allowed?
Because I truly think this more or less is a stamp.
What do you mean by cross?
Yeah.
Future.
Mixing chemicals together and manufacturing. That's, that's actually the last couple, three or three big explosions, that's what was going on. They were doing something. And so...
Because I truly think as is, we use that word, but it's being grandfathered in, that any change of use or future use would have to have those restrictions.
Yeah. And this would be going forward from.
See, and I can't see anybody down there. The only thing I guess is the grain business down there, I don't know. Right now with your storage and stuff, I can't see in the future, I guess everyone, my going speed type, trying to do some mixing and stuff. Because that's really what causes trouble even in the grain business is the mixing and... So I guess that probably would be an issue to them either not, no manufacturing, we know...
Can processing.
Or we got no mixing of chemicals, but I don't know why you say that.
Grain elevator, elevators will explode from the dumps.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, oh yeah.
You have to be careful of that, but it really depends on how the maintenance is done on there when they fan that way to drive. And if they keep their fans clean, they should never have to do that.
Well, I think if you look at the record, we only had one that blew up in Dillon and that was probably, but, you know, we also need to look at that. That, that happened, what, 30 years ago, 78, 79? Somewhere in there. And back then, I'm betting nobody had any contingency plans for what's gonna happen if nobody were blowed up. And look how well the city handled it. I mean, they contained the damage to one building. Of course, the old fire department was there when it happened, but I would even think if they had to call fire department out, I don't think that would have got much further than what it did. I just think that they're...
Location.
Right, run the same way there, the location.
And this is off the track too.
So I think where they're at is, is safe anyway, or, you know, safer. Something to go boom, no matter where, and look at the fires, the gas leaks and both of them might go. You know, that actually caused more trouble than our grain industry did, so. I don't, I just, I just feel very hopefully I didn't there saying no, um, however you want to say it, no manufacturing, no chemicals.
Especially when you look at the overlap of the one entity down there being half city, half county.
Right. What did they do with that or have they determined?
I don't know, because I've been actually hoping to talk to our resident, uh, lawyer when she comes over and talks to us. That's actually a question I'm trying to figure, depending who it be, when you're doing something.
That should probably be addressed.
Well, I suspect, I suspect it has been addressed somewhere. You know, we talked about it off and on, because I actually didn't tell somebody here said something about it. I, I never hear any thought and then it was, well, how you zone this? And then I talked to some people and they said, well, you can't zone it because you're effectively taking control of a property you don't have no control over. So I don't know, because I just always have somebody who's owned it. People like me who have massive amount of property on both sides of the line just do what I want and... Say, whoops, I know where the line is.
Go with it.
I had no plans on it.
No, I think that's a plus, um, you know, being consistent with the zoning commission, that we've always respected those folks' wishes and concerns when it comes to zoning. And this is a prime example of it. I'm just grateful they've been patient for three years.
Well, I, for one thing at least, we can assume.
Because truly, with the amendment of the zoning doc of this new chapter, and then we'll do probably them right after. That way this will be in place almost simultaneously. We'll go through the hearing again, folks with internal feet can actually express their concerns.
There's no audio down there, is there?
Not that one.
I don't think so.
I mean, I guess I can read from here and find out.
I don't have no material.
That's...
So I would say this is a great start, Mr. Hazel Baker, thank you, but I think if we just add the concerns from Raven, you know, that way it's at least found out. Because sometimes if we're all gone in one year, people know there aren't at least no ones in place.
Okay, better than I'll say, then I can come up with an actual chapter for the next meeting, but I'll be with them first.
And should we, uh, be looking at maybe a timeframe for setting a date for a hearing? I'm assuming we'll have the zoning area and have this area the same.
Yeah.
One to the other.
Back to back.
We have, we're looking at a date sometime. Is it March, first part of April?
I would say first part of April, because by the time we meet in two weeks, we'll make our recommendation.
And then that night, we can probably set.
Yeah, I would probably say look at that first week of April, at least before Easter, get it done. Doug, any comment, suggestions, feedback on this? Mr. Hazel Baker, thank you. I think we're off to a good start and I look forward to the finish on that one. Line item F, update discussion of zoning code enforcement violations.
Did you remember last time we tabled some trouble time, we had a meeting with...
Yes.
Yep.
So all those in favor of tabling line item F?
Just a reminder though, because Mrs. Urfo was not here, on March 16th, uh, Kelly Lynch. Uh, from the Montana, the lead Montana towns and cities is gonna come and, uh, do a workshop for the zoning commission planning board in part of adjustments on the afternoon of the 16th to address any questions that we have. Other such as the question tonight, can we have that addressed? And we want to visit with her about enforcement. This is one of the issues. And Mr. Dolan, uh, is the one that's arranged that and has her come.
The attorney for the, she the MMIA attorney, isn't she or she Leaks?
She's the Leaks.
She's trying to say?
I think she's the Leaks attorney in, uh...
For MMIA, it does.
Yeah, she does work for him, I think.
Yeah, because that's, yeah.
Mar 16th.
The afternoon of Mar 16th.
Yes, afternoon of Mar 16th. Starting at 1:00, that's the, 1:00 to 5:00.
1:00 to 5:00?
Yep.
So with that being said, all those in favor of tabling till said time, um, the update discussion of the zoning code enforcement or violations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, thank you. With that, we'll jump to the biggest one of all. Public comment. Anybody?
Well, while we're on public comment.
Those, those are kind of bringing up so many.
Oh, man.
Well, here it is.
Okay, well, I guess I just got a quick comment of maybe we couldn't, we need to start on the zoning stuff that we've had the hearing spored down on Swenson Way. We need to get that back on the agenda and, and, because that's already been to the thing, we need to just do the bottom.
Make a recommendation.
Recommendation and get it sent on, be one less thing on the table.
Thank you.
I don't know, we'll have time the next, we need to do that or something.
We'll add it next time.
Yeah, well, next time, yeah.
That should be a pretty simple thing, I would think.
Yes, truly just fax and finally make a recommendation. Awesome. Mr. Hazel Baker, your public comment?
Yours suspended.
As director of operations or as a citizen?
Both. Uh, I received a phone, well, actually it was an email from a local realtor concerned about, or asking questions about VRBs. It's not right, vacation rental businesses. And then also, what is it, ARBs or RBs?
Airbnb, or Airbnb.
Yeah, all the alphabets. Have we given any discussion of those?
Good question. Right now in the community, we have over 50 of them in place right now, folks. Yes, that many, believe it or not, there's 50. Not all of them are within the city limits, of course, and a lot of them are seasonal.
Okay, so does then that become a home business?
There are some in the city, right?
Yes, there are.
Oh, yeah, no.
We have one a block away.
Yes.
That's reopened.
There isn't anything in the zoning above that, is there?
No, there's not.
No, nothing.
So that's something maybe we need to add to our, to our control, because that's something that...
It's not gonna go away.
Probably should, all right, but it should be addressed because, um, how do they address, pay tax on that kind of stuff?
That I do not know.
I don't either.
I would assume if it's through the internet, you get taxed, but I would assume if it's personal or private with an outfit or there's nothing.
Right. So you're not, I don't know. I know that, uh, what was it, Brazila, just did something with Airbnb or Bozeman or whatever. Maybe you've heard too. I should be can see what they done and then, I don't know if it really, the only reason I would like to see some kind of regulation on it is only because you get in the winter time, you get hunting season, I know this firsthand, you get people move in, 15 people in one house and 13 buggies and then it kind of crowds the area, you know, and everyone's forward and then...
But I also think because of the safety aspect of it, um, when we look at a lot of the, uh, the fire down at Max, the biggest concern was the apartments upstairs, are the people out? And I think that's when you have these units such as a block over, at least so that our local authorities at least have an idea that there may be people at those premises. And that's where it's a safety issue, and I think we just need to make it to people's awareness. And I also need to think, we need to follow up with the discussion of signs entering the city. The zoning will be enforced and the fact that we do a sticky or some type of applique to all the empty businesses around town. Then note, one, welcome to Dillon. Two, please stop in at the city hall to find out zoning, water, sewer, et cetera, et cetera. So here regardless of realtors, whomever, people at least are formed that they know where to go to find out if I can have this here because of the zoning of the city. Water department, think of the part of their name. And of course, we welcome their business and them being here.
Good idea.
So I mean, if we have to look into a budget or something like that, I think that needs redone. I mean, we've always talked about education. To me, I think that's the only way to do it that's in your face. We at least gotta let people know we do exist.
Yeah. And it was on the radio, but that's unlimited. And then we have...
Yeah, we're getting more and more media, we're like celebrities. We don't assign enough on things though, bummer.
And then my other, uh, issue is that we have approved storage units. But something that I did not know what was going on until recently was that there are businesses being conducted out of the storage units.
No.
He said.
I'm sorry.
So you know the bigger storage unit? And there's businesses being conducted out of them. Legitimate businesses.
Well, there should be a business.
But, but that's one of those, as a board, we passed it as a storage unit.
Correct.
And that was it. The owner's taking it a step further.
And doing a business, and he should be required to do a change of use provision.
Yes, change of use.
That's where the violation would come in.
Okay.
Correct. If he does a change of, and comes back in and says, I want to do this as a business, but then he's going to get into a lot of other stuff that as a business, you have to follow a particle.
Especially if he's not.
I don't know, a particle would work very good in a storage unit.
Sure. And then the parking issue as well, because if you're not a commercial.
Yeah.
An entrance, okay? No, that was just one of the issues that just gave my attention.
Clever.
Last week and I did not know what was going on.
Where is the storage here, you're not saying yet to mention?
That's north of town. Off the Old Beale Highway.
It's a dog groom and outfit.
Yeah. And there's another one, there's three different businesses advertising.
There's more than just dog groom.
Yeah, there's at least three.
Yeah, that should be all change of use and...
Change of use, and then truly impact health and safety.
Right, they'll have to go and get, you know, well, call the fire marshal and say what you need to do and then... And I would imagine that the building codes were different for a business than a storage unit.
Does that mean it has to have the use of signage?
Right. Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of, uh, things that, uh, hardly will permit, they're gonna be hard to get is the estate deal. And I wouldn't think that, you know, he built something as a storage unit and then he turned it into a building for, that would change building codes. And I would assume they would have to, I don't know if the state cares about that anymore. I'm in there all the time, I thought, but maybe they don't really care, I don't know.
I guess they're good storage units. Most of the stuff I went to hasn't been that worn.